To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, could you please take roll call?
Rob Twyer. Alicia Noback.
Here.
Michelle Blythe.
Here.
Deborah Nelson.
Here.
Yvonne Gallardo.
Here.
Jan Schwedney.
Present.
Heather Logan.
Present.
Mayor Vanny, I move for approval of the agenda.
Second. Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our first workshop item. Ordinants amending Arlington Municipal Code, Chapter 20.16. Amy.
Thank you, and good evening Mayor Vanny and members of council. So, the first item tonight is for a code amendment to Chapter 2016, which is our permits and land division approval chapter. So, there were two items that are relatively exactly the same. So, that was 240 and 270. It's regarding around the time limits for permit processing and then resubmital for additional information. So, we made a decision in our office with the different timelines that were required by the state. We thought that, we had, just so you know kind of the background a little bit, developers were coming in, they would have 60 days to resubmit and want an extension for another 60 days, want an extension for another 60 days, an extension for another 60 days. And all of a sudden, we're in a project two years and we've gone through three code amendments, whatnot, blah, blah, blah. So, we believe that 120 days is sufficient enough, so that's six months. So, they can come in for, they can ask for one extension of 60 days and then they need to resubmit something. So, it doesn't have to be their final plan, but they need to resubmit so we can review that portion at least and then get it back out. So, and so if they don't resubmit, if they're waiting, say, on an archaeological study or some sort of study that's a little bit more in-depth, it's not that we wouldn't stop the project, we would allow them to resubmit every item except for that, and then re-review and then keep that comment on there that they needed to resubmit that in the next resubmital. So, it's not that we're trying to diminish their project and get it where it's not reviewable, just that we need to have some sort of deadline that they can't just keep going over and over and over and over again without us reviewing something. And then that same part was also down in the time limits for permit processing under a temporary suspension. So, we currently have a project that asked for a temporary suspension to work on easement with a neighbor, and it's been a year. So, that's where this came in. Also, we feel that six months is plenty of time to make some sort of agreement and move on with your project. And then the last section in, or 265, is just changing the fire marshal to the fire code official. So, I do want to make sure that you all know that this is following Chapter 15 that came forward. This does not change who that code official is. So, the code official is defined in 15 under North County Regional Fire. That's how it will remain for now until anything changes with that. So, it's, we're not changing the code official to anyone else, just making it match the language. So, everything, there's a few other chapters that I'll be going over that have the same language change. So, all it is is changing it from fire marshal to fire code official, which matches Chapter 15.
Heather?
Thank you, Dawn. Amy, you said this gives them six months, but 120 days is four months.
Oh, four months, I'm sorry.
Four months is what you wanted.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, they get four months plus one month, they get five months? Yeah? Oh, no, 60 days.
60 days.
They end up with six months, so four plus two.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, four months.
That's all right. I'm struggling with.
My mistake, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? None, oh, Michelle?
You said, like, the Title 15, North County, the fire, is the fire official, fire code official for now?
Well, I don't know if there'll be any change in the future, like, I don't know, 20 years from now, 10 years from now.
Okay, I, I don't care about 20 years from now.
Yeah, I don't know.
I just wonder if you're, like, six months from now.
No, 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 as long as the ILA is in place.
Okay.
And it doesn't change from council, then that's the way it will remain.
We just updated 15 a month or six weeks ago.
Yes.
Okay.
That reflected, that reflected the change from being a city fire department to part of RFA.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
No other questions? Okay, we'll move on to our second item. The Ordinants Amending Arlington Municipal Code, Chapter 20.44.
Thank you again, Mayor Vanny. So, this one, we have three sections that were changed within this chapter. So, Chapter 2044 is our supplemental use regulations and kind of covers a variety of different things. So, the first one I'm going to talk about is the, where it's 2044-020G, that's part of our unit lot subdivision section. So, this is addressing the off-street parking. So, we can't require off-street parking for middle housing anymore, and so that's why B is, yeah, struck out. And then the D, E, which is now D, it doesn't make sense to have a bicycle parking facility at townhomes. So, they can choose to have one, but they can also provide them within the garage of each unit. So, I wanted to make sure that was clear, we've been allowing that instead of having an extra parking, rack for bicycles. They, a lot of them are choosing to put them at their larger parks, but I didn't want them to have to put the amount in that they needed. They could do one rack instead of, like, six. So, that's kind of where that came from. And then 2044-035 is our, is a section of, so it's Section S of the Administrative Conditional Use Permit for Homeless Encampments. I'm not changing anything about homeless encampments that's not already in our code. It's just changing the fire department to the fire code official all the way down. And this was the only section that had that in there. And then 2044-080 is defining a process for our mobile sales and delivery. When we opened the food truck court, the city-owned food truck court, there became different process than someone out in the community doing one. So, they, they didn't have to do, they don't have to get the property owner's permission because it is our property already that we're doing it. And so, this is split up into three different sections, so A, B, and C. So, the first section is requirements for mobile sales and delivery that's not food-related. And then B is mobile sales and delivery for food trucks in all the city limits, and then C is designated for the food truck court. So, these are straight from our application. So, that's where I got this code. So, this is already what we're doing with the application, I just put it into code. So, if you have any questions on that one? Yes?
Just a clarification, is the mobile sales and deliveries trucks such as Amazon?
No, these are people that are mobile and then selling items. So, we have, so like ones that aren't food-related would be, there's a gal that does flowers, so she sells flowers out of a horse trailer. Anything not food-related, because they don't have to have the same inspections if they're not food-related. Like, that's the only one I can think of. Oh, the Mac?
Out at, for, hey, Ace, I think, sometimes that parks in the middle of Fifth. Or McLeod, I'm sorry.
If he's going to, if they're going to a store, we usually don't do that. So, it's only if they're selling to the public and not to a store.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Heather?
Thank you, Dawn. Amy, just one point, and I don't see it in this policy, so it must be the next one. It's no longer the Health District, it's the Health Department.
Yes, did I miss that somewhere?
I think it's in the next one, because I don't see it again in this one.
Okay, I will make that change.
Thank you.
Oh, Snohomish County Health District?
Right, it's now the Snohomish County Department of Health.
Okay, I will make that change for the next week.
Okay, thank you.
Snohomish County.
No other questions for that one? Okay, none seen, then we'll move on to the third one. Ordinants amending Arlington Municipal Code, Chapter 20.56.
Thank you, Mayor Vanny. So, this one is one word. So, same, I just went through our entire code for the fire code official, so it's one section, so 060, the neighborhood access had fire chief, and we changed it to fire code official, and that's the only change that was made in that chapter.
Any questions? None seen, okay, we'll move on to item number four. Ordinants amending Arlington Municipal Code, Chapter 20.68.
All right, thank you again. So, this one is for, we made, added to an exemption for public signs. So, this is for city-owned signs or city-owned operated signs, so it could be owned by somebody else, but if the public is operating it, such as the sign in the parking lot, at the merchant's parking lot, since that's the one we're kind of talking about here. But it could be for other signs that we put up, other places within the city. So, they do have to be government-owned or operated for the public. So, we added that they could be reader boards, freestanding signs, and then we increased the size of the sign from 16 square feet to 32 square feet. And then they can have changeable text, internal illumination, or external lighting if they're lower to the ground. And then everything has to be downshielded if it's an exterior lighting, and that takes, that code section takes you back to downshielding. And then they, it does still need a building permit, it's just exempt from any land use. So, anything structural would still need a permit. So, if it's a freestanding sign, the poll needs to have structural submitted, and then how it's being attached. But that's only part of the sign, it won't be under any other scrutiny. So, as long as it's under 32 square feet, it doesn't have any landers, land use review, just goes straight to the structural for a poll or attachment details.
Any questions? I just have one that I'm assuming the permitting also includes electrical?
Yes, yeah, they would need an electrical permit.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Item number five, the Ordinants Amending Arlington Municipal Code, Chapter 20.72.
All right, thank you. So, this one, as I mentioned earlier, I made a change for, I was actually going to change the tandem, just the tandem, and then realized that I should change the whole thing, so we don't have to come back in here. So, this is addressing the middle housing that I was talking about earlier. So, I just redid the table. So, if you can kind of follow along, there's three in the third table down. I don't know what you're looking at. One, two, three, yes. So, where it starts with cottage housing, there's three that are removed from that section that was put into the box above it. So, those can still be required to have two spaces for each dwelling, and then I've crossed them out in that section and then added all of the middle housing, and then removed the middle housing from the multifamily down below. And then this is straight from, I have the RCWs listed on your, your cover sheet. So, there's two different RCWs that I referenced from the, from the state on where I got this information. So, that basically, the parking goes off the size of the lot before a subdivision or lot split. So, if the lot is greater than 6,000 square feet before they subdivide, then two spaces for each dwelling are required. And if the lot is less than 6,000 square feet, we can only require one space per dwelling unit. And then we also have the caveat of there are no parking spaces if it's located within a half-mile walking distance of a major transit stop, and our major transit stop is Smokey Point. And then the multifamily, I did not change. That was a directive from council a few years ago, so that is, that is staying until you all give me the word that it could be reduced at some point. So, that one I didn't touch. And then I did add tandem parking. It's also allowed by state, state law, so I just wanted to clean it up, so I just removed our entire section. Number C, I did leave. That was from our current code that I left in there for commercial tandem. A and B are new, and so it just, just shows when they can, when they can use tandem parking and how it needs to be assigned. So, if it's in a multifamily, they have to have assigned parking, you can't have, like, lot or unit apartment one and then apartment two be in front and, in front or behind each other. We want it to be assigned, so if apartment two needs two parking spaces, then they could be assigned a tandem, the two tandem, but we can't have it cross. So, I just wanted to make sure that, that was spelled out in here, so they could do that. And then we would allow it with any single family or townhome.
Any questions, Yvonne?
Oh, sorry, I'm just thinking aloud, but is this something too where, instead, if they're doing the tandem parking? And they block the sidewalk in any way, what, what happens then? Like, is that in here somewhere that they can't, they can still do tandem parking as long as they don't block a sidewalk?
Yeah, so when they do a project, so we've done a few of these already with the townhomes, the units on, so say you have a fourplex. Usually, two units on the end of a townhome have the two-car garage, but the middle units are skinnier. So, they have a one-car garage and they go too deep. So, this is all with, it can be within a driveway or a garage?
Oh, so not just the driveway is tandem parking?
Correct.
They both count?
Yes, yep, so they could have, they could have, in a garage, they could have one here, one here, and then they could still have a driveway space. Or if there was, they can build where there's only five feet, like, if it's from an alley where there would be no driveway, then they would have to supply both of them in the garage.
Okay, so we're not blocking sidewalks?
No.
And that's still not going to be allowed?
That would still be going to code enforcement for that. They can, they can park, I did not put it in here, but state law just passed, I don't think it's, I don't think it's technically in play yet, because they have different, I think it's 27 that it goes into effect. But you can park in front of your driveway, just can't block the sidewalk. So, you can park along the street in front of your own driveway and block your driveway from people getting in and out, but you cannot block the sidewalk.
Because there is a rule on how long the driveway has to be, right?
Yeah, we still have that in place.
I was only asking because my old house, our driveway was short, like, I had a Grand Jeep Cherokee, and that one blocked the sidewalk.
Oh.
It, because the driveway was so short. So, we would get, we always, it turned into drama in our HOA, but it was our driveway, yeah.
Heather, did you have a question?
Amy, in the residential multifamily apartments section with the 1.25 spelled out and all that, are these the same ratios that were in effect when Centennial, what's its name, south of, no?
No.
These are different, meaning there's more parking?
Yeah, so everything in, everything in black I did not change.
Okay.
And so, the, where you see the multifamily, that's what we upped it to.
Okay. Have we built anything with these ratios since Centennial Park?
We will be, we're permitted, we've permitted, but they haven't been built yet.
Okay. It just was, I know it was a stumbling block, I know that Centennial Park filled quickly, and I'm, my information, I don't know if it's right, is that information was not conveyed to the renters, that you only get, for example, one spot, even if there's a one-bedroom and two people living there. And as you remember, there was a lot of upset people that didn't have any parking, and then they parked on public streets, and that didn't work either, and, okay, but these are easier than those.
Yes, that is correct. So, these are the changes that we ran by council, I think it's two years ago.
Okay.
And then we ran them by you guys before we brought it back for adoption.
Okay.
But we also do require, on every land use permit that goes out for all multifamily, we have a requirement in there that we state that if there's any parking issues, they are on the developer and/or HOA to figure out how to fix, not on the city.
Okay, great, thank you.
To, you know, make the problem worse with Centennial is that the developer was way ahead of renting units before they were finishing parking, because they were using a considerable amount of it for laydown area.
And they did add a second parking lot.
And they added additional parking.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, yeah. Any other questions? Rob?
I don't know if this fits in here, but I'll ask it. Is there any, anything in the code that would prohibit somebody from parking in their, say, their lawn?
Yes. I'd have to find that for you. I believe it's in 2056, I think it's in our streets and sidewalks, because all the parking spaces are required to be paved, paved concrete, or they can be somewhat permeable, but they have to have, like, the grass creed or something like that, they can't just be grass. And then we also have another section that only allows 40, 40% of the front yard to be paved, the rest of it has to be open.
Michelle?
It's on the website for the police department, I think you have the 10 most, I don't know, something codes, and it talks about that, that you can't park in your yard. I like that list. That's a good list.
Yvonne?
And if that is happening, especially at an extended amount of time, that's just enforcement or calling the complaint hotline or whatever, right?
Yes, please.
On the website, there's a form.
Okay.
Yes. Everybody's watching.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, that takes care of Amy's stuff tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, go ahead, Michelle.
It doesn't relate to any of this, but can I ask?
Sure.
It's about signs, like, I checked on this recently, but, non-political signs that you see everywhere on gutters and mattresses? Gutters and mattresses and all those signs that are, like, everywhere, who picks those up?
We do randomly. The state, the state does their highways.
Yeah, I'm talking about Smokey Point and, like, just local streets.
That would be us, so we would have to go out and, we do a sweep every once in a while, Kevin and Carrie do a sweep every once in a while, but we're probably up for one.
Yeah.
If I've noticed them.
Yeah.
Would you like a sweep done?
Yeah, I'd be happy to go and pick the signs up with you. They're all over the place.
This came up last week, and it's on my list to talk to Amy about, but we've had a couple of other things that were just ahead of it, so I was actually going to talk to her about it.
Yeah, yeah, I just thought it was a good discussion.
Yeah, we will, we will do another sweep.
Yeah, I, and then, they're posted on trees, too.
And on the electrical cords.
Yeah.
It might take us a few days if there's that many with them connected, connected to things.
Smokey Point, that intersection, 188, I can give you streets.
Yeah, we won't, we won't pick up political signs, we won't pick up any political signs, so. If you notice some missing or something, let us know if we grabbed one on accident, because we'll put it back where it was. So, that's not something that should be picked up, but.
Okay.
How about the mattress signs?
Okay, Paul, do you have anything for tonight?
Nothing else this evening, thank you.
No, I just, all's I got is, it was a great weekend. I mean, we had, downtown was full, I mean, the street fair turned out to be really great, the Arlington, the hometown fly-in turned out really good. I mean, we went out there and spent some time out there, and it was really nice. Also, I want to give a great big thank you to all the staff and M&amp;O and all those people that worked the weekend. They did an outstanding job keeping all the garbages dumped and everything picked up. Between the street fair and the, the fly-in, it was pretty clean and kept up, but great kudos to them. Do we have any comments from council members or reports?
Alicia?
Well, I was just going to ditto what you said about the street fair, I was just going to say thank you to everyone who put that together and how amazing it was, and the vendors and the community that came together, it was incredible, such a perfect weekend for it. And then I was just going to say thank you to Jim Kelly, Lacy, Michelle, I, and Rob all got to take a tour of the storm treatment center, the wastewater plant. It was, it was quite an experience to see how everything gets done and where it all goes. It was exciting, it was great to learn about all of that, I think it's an awesome opportunity for everyone, should go and see how wonderful it is organized and done, and it was, it was interesting. You guys have anything to add?
You remember going together, Deborah?
They've won state awards for how well that they are, you know, do their work, so, yeah, Jim's and his team are great.
I was the same with them as I was with you, and I was like, ooh, oh, I can't walk there, ooh, it smells!
Surprised you went back there.
I know.
Any, Heather?
I have a couple of updates and a shout-out from the street fair. I spoke with Jerry Rugtwee, who's the treasurer of DABA, and she had been making her rounds. And she said that so many vendors, some she wasn't familiar with, were commenting about how well-populated the sale, the street fair was, and how many people were commenting how friendly Arlington was, so, you know, hats off to us. And I want to give a special shout-out to Jacob Carvahal, who was there for two whole days in the sun, standing up, smiling, ready to greet the public, just knocking the socks off kids with the stormwater presentation, and he kept his smile on even while people were making really bad jokes about the pooper-scooper exhibition. Showing a marvelous sense of humor, and I think there was a lot of hard work, but I worked on both days, two days, Friday, Saturday, and Jacob never stopped smiling, and he deserves a shout-out.
Yeah, no, they all did great. No, I think their biggest obstacle Friday with, with the pooper-scooper was dogs were thinking they were treats and picking them up and wanting to pack them off. Okay, with that, do we have anyone here with the public comment? Or do you have more? Oh, okay.
I also just wanted to thank all the vendors that came, I talked to a few of them, and a couple were brand, like, completely new, actually new vendors in general, like, just starting out, and they were really excited, just how, their sales were amazing, but it was the people asking all the questions and coming through town, and so they actually had some hope of maybe trying to even get into some of the storefronts, and like, it was really cool, because they, you know, walked back, a couple of them had walked the streets and actually saw that, wow, you guys really get a lot of people here, and there's a lot of great stories. So, hopefully, some of our brick-and-mortars are going to have new vendors to be able to go into their businesses. So, I really appreciate that Jerry really expands it, and these folks are so creative on some of their things that they make. So, I hope we can see a few new businesses coming from that.
Is that the most vendors we've had? Because, I mean, it was packed.
It sure felt like it, it sure felt like it.
Yeah, yeah, she's got, Jerry's got pretty much a limit that she can't go beyond it.
Oh, it's crazy.
And she hasn't filled, usually, 80% of it is filled by the time the street fair got over, yeah, for the next year.
And, and thank you to all the actual brick-and-mortar businesses that are here, that they have a brick-and-mortar and still make the time and effort to be on the street fair. Like, that is important, too, that they are coming out and they're actually interacting with folks differently. So, I really appreciate that they took the time to be a part of the street fair, and that the street fair invites them to be a part of it, too, so.
Yeah, great. Okay, again, at this time, anybody public would like to comment?
Okay, again, at this time, anybody public would like to comment? Nobody seen, okay. Consent agenda. Nothing.
I have questions on all of them, so...
We'll just leave it as is, then. Okay?
We're good.
I think we're good.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Second question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.